The council meeting of December 4th will come to order. Good evening. Would ask that all in attendance turn off or silence your electronic devices and if you would please stand to honor God and country. Wonderful, counselor, mighty God, everlasting Father, we lift this meeting, we lift this city to you. May we serve, may citizens join in causes that build up, not destroy. May we work for the good of others and for your ultimate glory. Father, this evening we specifically lift up former council member David Pagorilic as he mourns the loss of his father-in-law and council member Shalura at the passing of his uncle. We also lift city manager Charles Stevenson in prayer as he sits at the side of his mother following surgery earlier this morning. We lift the Bush family and our nation in prayer as we mourn the loss of our 41st president, a fighter pilot, an American hero, who as an elected official took countless time away from family to benefit our nation. Father, we love you. Let us commit to put action behind the reason for this season, which like our brothers and sisters who are in the midst of celebrating the Festival of Lights is all about the miracle of your love and provision. May we all determine to have our light shine bright for the good of others. Amen. We will now pledge allegiance to our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will make a brief note that we were expecting Rabbi Rifkin to be with us this evening and he may have comments later during open public, but he was going to be with us as we celebrate the third night of the Festival of Lights. So hopefully later this evening Councilman Ross was responsible for making that connection and as you see the rabbi, you can alert us at an appropriate time. Rabbi Rifkin, we were just announcing you, sir, if you'd like to come forward.
I am so sorry that my lecture was closed. Are we lighting the Hanukkah menorah? Thank you, everyone. Happy Hanukkah. So it happened through Facebook, I'm not sure if he's here, someone by the name of David Sabla. He's not even... He was, "How come we're not doing anything in Temple Terrace?" And I said, "I'm glad to do it." So I emailed and thank you for responding and saying, "Okay." I've been a resident now for... And I meant, thank you to Andy Ross, I bumped into him. He lives in our part of Temple Terrace, Pleasant Terrace, between 50th and Great Neighborhood. And thank you all for celebrating with us. So without further ado, we're gonna light the Hanukkah menorah and it's a symbol of freedom. We weren't allowed to practice our religion back in ancient Greece and we were victorious, we were allowed to practice our religion. So we're proud to be in this great country that allows us to practice our religion and we want to thank all of you for serving and being a great democracy and a great city and thank you for joining us. And without further ado, this is the tradition, we light for eight nights. Miracle of the oil, when they came to rededicate the temple after it had been desecrated, they couldn't find any pure olive oil. And the tradition is that a great miracle happened and they found one flask that lasted for eight days. Eight also representing the miraculous. We're gonna try, we need a miracle here. Okay, it goes like this. Thank you all so much and happy Hanukkah and thank you for serving. I'm a proud resident of Temple Terrace and thank you for the great service to our community.
Thank you for being with us this evening, Rabbi. If there are members of the public wishing to address counsel, there are forms available in the back of the room and may be turned into the clerk to my right. Next, I would ask Dr. Ray Madrigal and Florida College students who participated in the Florida City Government Week to please step forward towards the podium. Florida cities celebrate and engage citizens in the work of municipal government during Florida City Government Week, which this year was October 22 to 28. This week is promoted as a time for municipalities to provide and foster civic education, collaboration, and volunteerism. The city of Temple Terrace joined with Florida College for the second year to promote this. With the assistance and encouragement of the Florida College Administration, 11 students engaged in the event at City Hall. Each student was assigned a role to play during the day, serving as mayor, city council members, city manager, and directors. After a brief orientation with directors, the students were provided with a sample city council agenda that was presented to the mayor and council at a mock council meeting. By engaging students in civic matters through the day's activities and government process, we are hopeful that they can appreciate and recognize the commitment to service of their local government. This evening we present a certificate of recognition, which reads, "Certificate of recognition is presented this fourth day of December 2018 by the city of Temple Terrace, Florida to Dr. Ray Madrigal and the Florida College students in recognition of their participation and outstanding achievement in helping to make Florida City Government Day in Temple Terrace a success." Dr. Madrigal, would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to say that it's a wonderful collaboration that the city of Temple Terrace has with Florida College and it's an honor to work with such outstanding young people that represent the future leadership of our city and our nation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. at the dais. Each year, men and women who have dedicated their lives to the agricultural industry in Hillsborough County are honored at the annual Harvest Fest Awards Ceremony. The Harvest Awards Program was established by the Cooperative Extension Service as a way to preserve the agricultural heritage of Hillsborough County and to celebrate those outstanding pioneers in the farming community. The 2018 Harvest Award Event was held on October 18 at the Hillsborough County Fairgrounds. The awards that were presented included Farm Family of the Year, Urban Agriculture of the Year, Outstanding Public and Community Service, Agribusiness of the Year, and Lifetime Achievement Award. Dale McClellan and his family were the 18th farm family to be honored with the distinction of Farm Family of the Year. The award was presented to the McClellan family by Adam Putner, Florida Commissioner of Agriculture and former candidate for Florida Governor, who noted that Dale McClellan was an innovator, a farmer, and a Floridian through and through. In addition to being honored with this prestigious award, Dale McClellan and his family have been making significant and positive impacts in the Temple Terrace community for a number of years. We thank you for our investment to the community and today we are going to be presenting you with a proclamation and it's a bit lengthy, but it's important and especially when you have a family that has this level of distinguished service to our community. Whereas Dale McClellan was born into farming and at the age of 23, he commenced work on a plan to refurbish his grandparents' farm and milk processing facility with 500 cattle, new equipment, and refrigeration techniques which he reopened in 1987 as M&amp;B products. And whereas with the assistance of Dale's top aides, wife Mary, daughter-in-law Andrea, and sons Brian, Daniel, and Leon, the McClellan family has developed M&amp;B products into a thriving milk and fruit juice production business, which has been recognized for its proactive approach to meeting Florida school nutrition guidelines because giving schoolchildren the extra nutrition their growing bodies needs is important to the McClellan family. Whereas the McClellan family has become an innovative leader of agricultural issues and by championing the dairy industry, M&amp;B products has become the face of the milk industry in west-central Florida. Dale McClellan is not only active in the Farm Bureau and other agro groups, but he served for several years as the Director and President of the Hillsborough County Farm Bureau, as well as serving on many community and civic organizations. He has advised members of Congress on agricultural issues and is a founding member of the 301 House, a rehabilitation facility for alcoholics. He is also a supporter of youth sports, Ag in the Classroom, 4H, FFA. And whereas for the past few years, the McClellan family has organized and hosted Farm Night Barbecue in Temple Terrace with proceeds from this fundraising event being dedicated to the city of Temple Terrace Recreation Programs and the Temple Terrace Boys and Girls Clubs. And whereas Dale McClellan and his family have been the recipients of numerous awards over the years and most recently being honored the 2018 Harvest Awards. Whereas the Dale McClellan family has made significant and positive impacts on this community and the city recognizes and honors those individuals who give of themselves to preserve and improve the quality of life for our citizens. Now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, I do hereby deem it an honor to present this proclamation to the Dale McClellan family in recognition and appreciation of their investment in commitment to our community. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we have reservations in the back.
For all of us?
Thank you, it's a great honor. We've worked hard together to make this community better and we're glad to be a small part of it. And this is quite an honor, it's a big honor. And we're just grateful, thank you.
Well, thank you, and sir, you're not a small part, you're a big part of success in this community, thank you. Item 1C, Library Board Appointment, there is one vacancy on the library board. The city received one application from Kimberly DeFusco. Is Ms. DeFusco in attendance? I would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Kimberly DeFusco to the library board for a term extending from December 4, 2018 until December 4, 2021. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Kimberly DeFusco to the library board.
Thank you, Councilman Donahue, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Chambers, any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign, thank you, motion carries. And if Ms. DeFusco is watching, thank you for your service to our community. Next, Municipal Code Enforcement Board Appointment, there is one vacancy on the Municipal Code Enforcement Board. The city received one application from David Pagorilic. I do not see Mr. Pagorilic here this evening, but would entertain a motion to appoint David Pagorilic to the Municipal Code Enforcement Board for a term extending from December 4, 2018 until December 6, 2020.
Move to approve, appoint David Pagorilic to the Code Enforcement Board.
Thank you, we have a motion from Councilman Ross, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign, thank you. Next, Item 1E, School Support Committee Appointment, there is one vacancy on the School Support Committee. The city received two applications, one from Jennifer Lombard and one from Edeline Verona. Are the candidates... Would you like to address counsel?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Lombard, some of you may know me, others may not. I've been in Temple Terrace for over 20 years. I have four children, my oldest is 13 and she's currently at Greco Middle School, and then I have three at Lewis Elementary. I just love our community and I love our schools. I spend a lot of time volunteering there. I'm on the PTA Board at both schools, I try to go to as many of the SAC meetings as I can, and I'm making copies and all sorts of stuff. And I figured if I could help the community or reach out to some of the other schools as well in any way to make our community a better place, then I'd be happy to do it.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Each council member should be receiving a ballot from the city clerk. And if you would please mark on your ballot, thank you very much. We will give our clerk an opportunity to tally those ballots. Thank you for your willingness to serve, Jennifer. Counsel, would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Jennifer Lombard as the highest vote getter to be a member of the School Support Committee, starting from December 4, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Jennifer Lombard to the School Support Committee. Welcome.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign, thank you and thank you for your willingness to serve. Next, consideration of minutes from the previous meeting, if the minutes of the November 2018 City Council Meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign, minutes stand approved. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. Individual members of the public who are present in the audience may designate in writing a representative to speak on their behalf, not extending beyond a 10-minute period. As speakers come to the podium, please state your name and city of residence. During public comment on items not on the agenda, the city manager and directors in attendance do make note of these items. Jennifer Lombard.
I'm up here tonight, hello, good evening, I'm Jennifer Lombard, I live in Temple Terrace and I'm happy to be here. I'm here tonight now as a member of the Greco PTSA Board and we just wanted to share with you our upcoming event, so you have some information of one of the things we're doing to make this city even more wonderful. But it's an awesome new fundraiser, it's called Trek for Treasure, and some of you may have known Sam Longheed, he grew up in Temple Terrace, he went to Greco, and one of his visions before he passed away suddenly was to do this bicycle scavenging hunt in the community, to bring the community together and have a way to interact and have fun and get to know our city a little better. Well, we've been working with his mom and we want to keep that vision alive, and so we're gonna do that as our annual fundraiser for Greco Middle Schools PTSA. This year it's gonna be held on February 16, it's a Saturday. We're doing teams of up to six, we're asking that admittance is $20 an individual, you can go by bike, but we know we have a lovely golf cart community, so we can also do teams on golf carts as well, you won't have the same clues because we've got to keep it kind of fair, and it's for all ages, anybody's welcome to come out, bring your little ones, come with a team of adults, share the love. And afterwards, we're going to have an after-party, which will have food trucks, we'll have a live band, we're gonna try to have some of our local high schools come out and do demonstrations with their drum lines and maybe some of our clubs at Greco Middle School as well, and it should just be a really fun, great evening for the community. So I wanted to share that with everyone.
Very good. Thank you, Jennifer, and we are looking forward, as a counsel, I believe, on our next agenda, we will be introducing our new principal from Greco, so we'll have an opportunity to meet and welcome him to the community. I spoke with a school board member today and they are appointing an additional AP this evening as school board member, so hopefully we'll have them both with us, but thank you.
Good news for the school.
Mr. Noonan.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm John Noonan, I live at 305 South Glen Arvin Avenue, and I'm not sure about my information because I've only heard it from private citizens in Temple Terrace, but apparently there has been very good news about redevelopment that I searched for in vain in the pages of the Tampa Bay Times. I went through their archive, I even looked on the city's own website, I looked at the minutes of the last meeting. I think that when deals are finalized, when money comes into the city's coffers, that should be headline news, and I don't think anyone would accuse you of blowing your own trumpet or being boastful to say those things. I think that kind of news would lift the spirits of people in town, it probably might even draw others to be inquisitive about our redevelopment area. So I would urge you not to hide your light, this is a season of light, right? Don't hide your light under a bushel basket. Publicize these things as they happen, they really are good news for the city, and I hope you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noonan, and I'm looking at our communications team, we will absolutely, we are delighted, and if anyone is viewing tonight or with us this evening, we are delighted that we have money received in the bank from Paragon, the Paragon deal has closed. Very shortly, we will be announcing a groundbreaking and going forward, and of course, we are delighted that we now have three deals in the redevelopment area, so thank you for reminding us to think about the good news and not just say what's next. Thank you, Mr. Noonan. Denny Kuneck.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Denny Kuneck. I was here, I believe, on October 16, making some comments regarding accreditation of diplomas and schools, and I wish to add on a few points to that topic. Let me start with Albert Einstein that I mentioned here as failing his college admission exam and explain why that happened. He was German at the time, coming to Switzerland, and his prior education was of German accreditation origin. Swiss will not accept anybody with foreign degrees to pursue their degree, so talking about accreditation and administration and bureaucrats, there you go. So he went back to high school, finished the last year at the Swiss High School, was admitted to the Swiss Federal Institute of Technology, finished four years with a diploma as a teacher of physics and mathematics, and then was unemployed for a long time, until a friend of his helped him to land a job at the Swiss Patent Office in Bern, the capital of Switzerland, 100 miles away from Zurich, where he finally got into his element of physics and started doing research and writing. He lined up about five publications, and one of them submitted at the University of Zurich, a different school from the Polytech Institute across the street, coincidentally, and that thesis was rejected for being too short. It had only 17 pages. So he quit, he focused on his publications, got them out, got his name out there, became the Albert Einstein, and then his friends and wife, who was involved in his work, research work, et cetera, somehow made him to resubmit the original dissertation. And he made a joke about it, that he had it on one line, resubmitted it, and this time it was accepted without a problem. So why, go figure. Karl Marx's favorite subject in communism, it was somehow indirectly addressed here, lifelong alcoholic, unemployed and unemployable person who was a rebel and persona non grata, was stripped of his citizenship in Prussia and forced into exile, hopping from France to Belgium to England where he found his refuge and started seriously publishing, living on money of his in-laws and Friedrich Engels' collaborator. Why am I mentioning this? Because there is a difference between degrees which are merely a piece of paper and work that follows the degrees, which is the actual recognition of who you are, what you know, and what you can do for everybody else. Einstein, later on, got some nine, if not 10 honorary degrees, and there are other names that I'm sure everybody is aware of, like James Watson, who was one of the driving forces of industrial revolution with his steam engine, home-school boy and instrument repairmen at universities where professors were crazy about him to fix their instruments. There was another one who was Alexander Bell. Again, no formal education and eventually started a big corporation. Another one was Henry Ford, worked on the farm with his father, and the only school that, or courses he ever has taken, was accounting, because that's what he needed for his business. So all relevant things. More recently, Bill Gates and Mark Zuckerberg, they dropped out of Harvard in the second year, one starting Microsoft, the other one Facebook, and then guess what, they all got degrees 12 years or so later, and do you want to call them if it's honorary degrees that they are criminals because they use or have those degrees? And somebody may object to honorary degrees and people who didn't earn them the way like everybody else. There was an issue here that what am I gonna tell my children when they go to college and there are professors, be it instructors, adjunct instructors, so not permanent faculty, that teach my kids and they work hard on their degrees? What am I gonna tell them? Well, the story is, learn from Einstein, learn from Engels, learn from Alexander Bell, Ford, James Watson, or anybody else, and the solution is in the marketplace. It's not a piece of paper that you can post in the bathroom and look at it every time you flush the toilet, if there is nothing behind it than just a piece of paper. It is what you can do with what the paper stands for that you have learned, that counts. Now let me mention something about the diploma mill issue, okay? If somebody attacks an institution, be it a private for money operating or publicly funded, and including USF, there's been an article in 2016 and 2017 talking about a professor, which turned out to be an adjunct instructor or something like that, at Polk State. And that gentleman got a PhD from USF, and the former dean of the College of Engineering or chairman of the Electrical Engineering Department simply took $4,999 to help this person to get his PhD online. So what kind of education is it when students teach themselves in the library, online from books on the internet, and teachers run around chasing research grants to look good, to please the administrators, where the ratio is like 30 to 1 student, and have no time to teach? So do you send your kids to that kind of institution, telling me that... Don't I have three more minutes?
You have six minutes.
Okay. Yes or no?
You have six minutes.
This was six minutes? Let me just conclude with one joke if I may. Russian, German, and American get together at the United Nations Meeting thinking about how to solve the issue of rioting at Polk at the United Nations meeting, thinking about how to solve the issue of rioting a porcupine. Is it even possible? The American says, no problem. We just take our high-tech laser gadget, shave the porcupine, hop on it, and ride into the sunset just like a bull. The German says, we have no time for games. We just put on our reinforced leatherhosen, hop on the thing the way it is, and it takes off like a rocket under a weight trying to escape it. And the Russian says, well, what about, what about unshaved porcupine and no pants on? And then people contemplate. And he said, you know what? I have the answer, because we do it all the time. We do it butt naked, and with tears in our eyes, and we do it because the party tells us to do it. So the collective always wins. And why am I saying that? Be aware where you send your kids. Be aware of organizations. And stop worrying about diploma, degrees, and the context, and focus on what's happening out there, and be a productive part of the society. Come here with research data rather than complaints.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item... Oh, no, I'm sorry. We have one more public comment. Bill Snelling. Is there anyone else wishing to address or make public comment this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Deborah Neal from the Greater Temple Terrace Chamber of Commerce. I'm the board chair. And I'd like to take this moment to introduce our new president and CEO.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Miranda Hilton, and I'm new to the chamber. I'm honored to be here, and I'm looking forward to working with you, as well as all of the local businesses and within the community. So I'm really happy to be here. I'd also like to introduce our membership coordinator, Skylar White. She's also new with the chamber. So we have a brand-new Temple Terrace Chamber here now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton. Uriel Rivkin.
Didn't plan on it, but I happened to be here, and I've been meaning to come for the last three years to talk about this issue. And I'm here, and it's a season of miracles, so who knows? So back 2009, summer 2009, almost 10 years ago, we purchased a property on 52nd Street near Fletcher in Pleasant Terrace. And the woman, it wasn't on the market. I happened to be walking in that neighborhood. I lived in another home in Pleasant Terrace, and she told me, I have this special zoning, RMF, residential multifamily. And I came to Temple Terrace, did all the due diligence, and spoke to everyone. And RMF has permitted used church, synagogue, school. And we purchased it for an extra $25,000, probably. There were homes for sale for $165, similar homes on 53rd Street with an acre. And we purchased it for $190, an extra $25,000, because as we came into Temple Terrace, and all the maps on the wall, everything showed that it was RMF residential multifamily. It borders residential multifamily. So, and on Temple Terrace's files, it got annexed in 2000. And like, right in the very beginning, it already, maybe for a year, it seems like it was R7 residential. And then somehow, the map, according to Temple Terrace, became RMF. But we never knew this, and they discovered it two or three years ago. And I think, is Charles here tonight? I didn't see him. Is he still city manager?
He is still city manager.
So he was then building the head, and somehow, he said it was a mistake on their files, after 11 years, after changing ownership with this zoning on the city's files, two, three years ago, they just manually, one day we showed them, they said, it's been changed to residential. It was a mistake. That it was all these years, the zoning of RMF. Even Michael Kokoski wrote letters, he's not alive anymore, but he admitted all of it. And so I don't know if anyone could look into it, there's new council members, whether a city's mistake and someone, you know, we're meeting for prayer and everything, but if we want to do a daycare, you need to get the right zoning. The first thing you show up to Hillsborough County, they say that you have the zoning to get a childcare, along with house of prayer. So it's just, I don't know what the law is. Maybe the city attorney could look into it. Again, if a city has on their files for so-and-so years, 11 years, and ownership was changed, and we bought it, and we looked at all city maps and everything, and the zoning was listed as RMF, then one bright day, two, three years ago, after 11 years of being some specific zoning, they said it was a mistake, and manually changed the zoning back to residential. That's, in brief, the issue, a lot more details to it, just, I don't know if anyone... We don't have a lot of money, no attorney in the synagogues. We never really did anything but pleading to your hearts, even though we don't have a lot of money, maybe someone could look into it and see if... It's just, it was like a shocker. We thought we found the best property, and we've been growing. We have a lot of families in Pleasant Terrace. You may see some walking to synagogue on Saturday, and my three minutes are up.
Thank you, Rabbi Rivkin.
And thank you all for letting me do that.
Thank you, Rabbi. And directors who are in the audience do make note of these items, so I'm confident someone will be... I'm seeing heads nod. Someone will be reaching back to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any others who would like to comment to council this evening? Seeing none, we will move forward to item 4A, municipal code enforcement board lien reduction petition for the address 10509 North 52nd Street. Municipal Code Enforcement Board Chair Richard Schmidt will present. Mr. Schmidt.
I got so excited when I saw code enforcement earlier that I moved to the front. But I'm very happy to have David Poglarbich come back on to the code enforcement. So I got a chance to say that, even though I wasn't aware. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm here this evening to introduce to the board the recommendation for lien reduction for the property located at 10509 North 52nd Street, with the lien amount of $30,150. City versus Concepcion and Felipe Caleros in case number 17-0970. This case originated back in July of 2007, with the lien reduction request was presented to the board on October 10, 2018, at the board meeting by Director Barone. The property came into partial compliance in June of 2007, and came into full compliance in November of 2008. At the time the property came into compliance, a fine amount had accrued in the amount of The long duration of fine during, fine being dormant, was a situation where the ownership of the property was transferred within the family. And a title search was not done for this property. The new owner came, became aware of the lien when they received the notice that the city, from the city regarding the collection of the lien amount, and came in to follow up on the resolution satisfaction of the lien through lien reduction. After hearing from Director Barone and petitioner, Mr. Carlos via his interpreter and board discussion, the board on the recommendation as presented to the board by Director Barone to reduce the lien from $30,150 to $2,500. By motion of six, a six-to-zero vote, the recommendation to the council is for the lien to reduce, to be reduced to $2,500, with the stipulation that the reduced lien amount be paid in full within 30 days of the city council approval, or the lien amount will revert to the full amount of $30,150. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Is Mr. Carlos... He is not here.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Barone, does staff have anything additional to add?
No, Madam Mayor.
And we do not have the petitioner in attendance, Chairman Schmidt.
No petitioner.
Are there any members of the public wishing to address council on this issue? Seeing none, I would ask if council determines that a lien reduction is appropriate, would call for a motion to approve lien reduction in case 07-0970, City versus Nelson Claros, for the property located at 12902 North 53rd Street. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that the board accept the recommendation of the code board to reduce the lien to $2,500 for the property located at 12902 North 53rd Street, contingent upon the fine being paid within 30 days of this meeting, or it reverts back to the original amount.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a...
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Chairman Schmidt. Consent agenda. Acting City Manager Chief Ken Albano will explain the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are four vehicle purchases before council this evening on the consent agenda. Item 5A is a resolution approving the purchase of a 2019 Ford Escape for the fire department. As part of the fire department's vehicle replacement program, $30,000 was allocated for this purpose within the approved 2018-19 fiscal year budget, under general fund account If approved, the purchase of this vehicle will be made from Prestige Ford, under Florida Sheriff's Association contract number FSA 17-VEL25.0, at a cost of $18,890. In addition to this, the purchase of an emergency lighting package would be made from Signal Technology Enterprises, Incorporated, under piggyback from the City of Miami bid award number 16-0009, at a cost of $2,344.30. Additionally, Communications International will remove and install currently-owned radio equipment at an estimated cost of $300, but in any event, not to exceed $500. Finally, vehicle graphics will be installed by Image 360 at a cost of $422.77. The total projected cost of this vehicle and equipment purchase is $21,957.07. Item 5B is a resolution approving the purchase of a 2019 Ford F250 to replace an existing 2003 Chevrolet Silverado within the Parks and Recreation Division. If approved, this purchase will be made from Duval Ford in the amount of $39,778, under Florida Sheriff's Association contract number FSA 18-VEL26.0. The approved fiscal year 2018-19 budget includes $40,000 in funding for the purchase of this replacement vehicle, under account number 001-1896-572.6412. Item 5C is a resolution approving the purchase of a 2019 Chevrolet Impala, including all required emergency equipment for the police department. As part of the police department's vehicle replacement program, $24,573 was allocated for this purpose, within the approved 2018-19 fiscal year budget, under community investment tax account number 160-1431-512.6411. If approved, the vehicle purchase will be made from Stingray Chevrolet at a cost of $21,273, under Florida Sheriff's Association bid award FSA 18-VEL26.0. The remaining budgeted funds, not to exceed $3,300, will be used to purchase emergency lights and other equipment necessary to properly outfit and equip the vehicle. And finally, item 5D is a resolution approving the purchase of a 2019 crane carrier LET curbside recycle collection vehicle for Public Works. This purchase is being made in conjunction with the scheduled replacement of an existing 2001 recycle truck. The approved 2018-19 fiscal year sanitation fund budget includes $255,304 allocated for this purpose, under account number 480-2041-534.64-12. If approved, the purchase of this vehicle will be made from Container Systems and Equipment Company, Incorporated, under Florida Sheriff's Association bid award FSA 18-VEH16.0, specification 16. Staff recommends approval of consent agenda items 5A through 5D.
Thank you, Chief. Are there persons in the audience wishing to address council on this item, on the consent agenda? Seeing none of the consent agenda is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull item A for discussion.
Item A will be pulled and moved to new business. Thank you, Councilman Ross. Is there a motion to approve items B through D on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve items B through D.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Chambers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Schisler. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign. Thank you. Next, first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to adopt 2018 Capital Improvement Section, CIS, Schedule of Projects Update. The public hearing is now open. Melissa Dickens, Hillsborough County Planning Commission, will present.
Hi there. Good evening, council members. Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. I think the presentation should be showing up shortly. Again, this is the 2018 Capital Improvement Section Schedule of Projects Update. This is something that is required to be updated by Florida statutes in your comprehensive plan every year. So I am here to present the annual update this evening. So this update was conducted in accordance with Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes, which is the chapter that requires this update in the comprehensive plan. This update would replace the existing Capital Improvement Section Schedule of Projects that is currently adopted in the comprehensive plan with the schedule that is listed in your packets. This update to the comprehensive plan is permitted to be done by ordinance, as opposed to the traditional comprehensive plan process. So it is an ordinance-type process. And the Planning Commission reviewed this item for consistency with your Temple Terrace comprehensive plan, as well as the comprehensive plans of the adjacent jurisdictions. And I wanted to talk a little bit about how the schedule was developed briefly. Temple Terrace staff worked collaboratively with Planning Commission staff to look at the CIP and look at those projects which affect an adopted level of service in the comprehensive plan. City staff did identify whether the project eliminated a deficiency, maintained level of service, or was planned for future growth. And city staff also recommended that the list of tenure transportation projects be incorporated into the Capital Improvement Section schedule. For those portions that were city projects, within the first five years and specifically affected levels of service, those were included in the report and analysis in this presentation. This slide shows a summary of the five-year Schedule of Projects. You can see there are six program areas that make up the schedule, a total of 81 projects, and approximately $17.5 million. And again, these projects were all pulled from the CIP that you all adopted earlier this year. And in terms of level of service priorities, the bulk of the funding, approximately 79%, is for repair and renovation to maintain level of service. The remainder of the funding is for projects to serve future growth or eliminate a deficiency. And I'll talk a little bit about how that fits in with the comprehensive plan on the next slide. So the Planning Commission reviewed the CIS schedule with respect to the adopted goals, objectives, and policies in the comprehensive plan. A few of these policies are identified here. The full list of policies is available in your staff report. And first, we found the schedule consistent with the direction for level of service priorities, which states that they should be first for repair or replacement of facilities to eliminate deficiencies or to plan for future growth. So we found that consistent there. Secondly, the CIS schedule is consistent with the funding criteria that is identified in the comprehensive plan, both in terms of revenue, fund, and timing. And then finally, we reviewed the individual infrastructure sub-elements to take a look at how the proposed schedule lined up with those, and found that many of the projects specifically furthered the intent of some of these adopted policies, and also were consistent overall. And so our recommendation this evening is that you all find the 2018 CIS Schedule of Projects consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan and approve. I will also say that the Planning Commission did find, did recommend a finding of consistency as well, the Planning Commission board. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available if there are any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dickens. I would first ask if there are any members of the public wishing to address council on this item. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Council members, questions? Seeing none of the clerk, would please read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the annual modification and update to the Capital Improvement Section of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the City of Temple Terrace pursuant to Chapter 165. of Temple Terrace pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes by modifying and updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of projects for 2018 through 2019, through fiscal year 2022 to 2023, and incorporating the ten-year long-term improvements for the multimodal transportation district for 2019 through 2028. And to the Schedule of Projects adopted by reference for the Comprehensive Plan Cap Policy 1.5.13, Hillsborough County Metropolitan Planning Organization's MPO Transportation Improvement Program, EIC, the HoloAerial Regional Transit Hearts Transit Development Plan, and the Hillsborough County Public Schools Facilities Work Program, providing severability and effective date in repelling all offenses of possible offenses in conflict.
If the ordinance is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading. If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, December 18. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the ordinance, the first reading ordinance, the annual modification update to the Capital Improvement Section to 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, Councilman Chisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Councilman Donahue. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign. Thank you, motion carries. Item 6B has been removed from our agenda. Moving on to item 6C, a resolution approving a renewal of law enforcement mutual aid agreement with the City of Plant City. Deputy Police Chief Sealy will explain.
Madam Mayor, council members, Bernard Sealy, Deputy Chief of Police. The Police Department is recommending the approval of the resolution adopting the law enforcement mutual aid agreement between Plant City and the City of Temple Terrace Police Department. We've maintained this voluntary agreement with Plant City for several years, and the current agreement expires January 1, 2019. The agreement provides the authority upon which voluntary cooperation and assistance in law enforcement resources between our two cities, how that happens, and it also sets the framework of how our officers and their officers respond and act within other It will remain in effect for five years unless modified or terminated by either party, and I stand for questions.
Are there any questions? Councilman Chisler?
Just curious question. Given the distances between the two cities, how often is the agreement utilized? How often do we?
We would utilize the agreement, we actually utilize it every year for providing resources, manpower for the Strawberry Festival. Our detectives would also fall into that if they're conducting investigations within Plant City.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? I would ask if there are any members of the public wishing to address council on this item. Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the renewal of a law enforcement mutual aid agreement with the City of Plant City.
I move to approve the mutual aid agreement with Plant City.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, we have a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign. Thank you, motion carries. Council business, is there any council carryover business from our previous meeting?
I have a question about the consent agenda. When you pulled item A, I thought you were going to discuss it, so...
Well, when we pull an item from the consent agenda, it moves under new business.
Okay. I just want to make sure we continue discussion on that. Thank you.
New business, a presentation from Bird concerning electronic scooters. I believe Caesar Hernandez, founder and managing director, Omni Public, will present Bird Electric Scooters.
Actually, it will be Servondo Sparza on behalf of Bird. And I believe we have a presentation that's being loaded, and I believe every council member and mayor have a copy of the presentation as well. All right, so I'm going to introduce what is Bird, and you might be able to see what a bird is over here on the right or your left. It is a electric motorized scooter. And what is Bird is it's a micro-mobility company that focuses on electric scooters as a first and last mile solution. What this is, is an option for individuals to use to get to their destination. Oftentimes, this is used in conjunction with transit to help provide that gap between different stops or to get someone to the final destination. What Bird does is obviously have a program of electric scooters, and what we do is provide an option for residents of cities and counties for mobility. And so we want to be a part of a transit system that has buses, trains, cabs, bikes. We want to provide that option for individuals to say, hey, I'm going to take a trip somewhere, and I want to use an electric scooter to get there. Either, most of our trips are about 1.5 miles, so we live in that space of it's a little too far to walk and a little too short of a distance to potentially drive your own vehicle, find parking, or just want to take a ride on a scooter instead of driving. And so our mission is to get as many roads, as many cars off the road and get folks kind of moving in other alternative transportation options. How we help cities and counties is provide an alternative transportation option. We reduce carbon emissions by if it replaces a car trip, then we're saving some CO2 emissions there, reducing traffic congestion where there is some, and including parking issues. We also invest in shared infrastructure. Something that I'll point out in this program is that we don't charge cities for our operations. Instead, we provide revenue sharing and provide, we pay for the cost of producing the program. What we would like is the opportunity to provide the service to your residents. Part of providing that service is providing that service in areas that you think is best fit, and I'll go through a slide talking about certain areas that might be a good focus for a potential demonstration project. How it works, so if you have a telephone, you download the Bird app. And so the Bird app in the first slide that you see here, the first photo, you'll see that there's a map of a lot of different birds in different locations. And what you do is if you're looking for an alternative option, you would look at the app and say, to see where the nearest bird is. It might be parked right outside City Hall, so you would go out there with your smartphone. You would open up the app, hit the ride button, and then you would scan a code here on what we call the brain. So you scan that, and once you have an account, so obviously you have to start an account, scan a driver's license, you'd be able to unlock it. It costs a dollar to unlock, and then 20 cents a minute after that. And then what you do is, once you follow the, once you get a tutorial about the rules of the road, how to turn it on, what the local rules may be, then you're able to use it. And so what you would do is get reminders on what the local reminders are. It'll show you how the distance you're going, it'll show you a map if you want to look at that. And at the end of the trip, you would close, end the ride, and then you have to send us a photo of how you ended your trip, so showed us, show us exactly where you parked. You'll get some guidelines in terms of where the appropriate parking is. Typically, it's right next to a bike rack or in any area where you can legally park your bike or an area of a wide sidewalk that won't get in anyone's way. So how we work and how these Bird scooters are deployed is we have, we work with chargers. And so chargers are individuals who decide to sign up to charge our electric scooters. So we send those individuals about three to five different chargers, and then they commit to charging the scooters overnight. And so for every scooter that they charge, they get a certain amount of money, and then they have to deploy that scooter the next morning between 4:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. in different locations. Those locations are predetermined by working with the city on saying these are the deployment areas that we've approved. And then they're, once deployed, then the charger gets paid. And so the screenshot of the first map is essentially what areas where, when chargers are ready to be picked up, and usually they're picked up around 9:00 to 10:00. And so chargers are able to see where they are, go pick them up. Usually we call it capturing. And then once they deploy them, you'll see the second photo, is they have to send us a photo of how they parked them, so that we know that they parked them in a correct manner. And if they don't, they're subject to no longer work with us because we have to make sure we leave the scooters in a neat place. So part of the commitment of what Bird does is that we have a daily pickup. So as you have seen in other areas, is sometimes when you have some potential, like a bike share program, those bikes are moved less just because they don't need to be charged, and so a lot of times you'll see them sitting in the same place oftentimes. Because they need to be charged, they're touched every day, meaning they're inspected for any damage. They're also, you know, picked up, charged, and then moved to another predetermined location like we talked about with the nests. And so those are, that's a constant ability for us to realign where these scooters are parked, and that also gives us a flexibility. Oftentimes, we'll see that birds will go to a shopping center or like they'll go to a coffee shop, you know, or they'll just go, you can sort of tell where the individual sort of go into and what they were thinking, just because they have the freedom of, instead of walking, now they're able to take a Bird scooter. Another question that we usually get is, well, how many scooters for our community? And so typically, we will look at the population, kind of the area, but then we also commit to responsible growth. Usually, we start with about 100 and deploy them in different areas. If we see that we're getting three rides per scooter per day on average, that means we're seeing enough demand that we may add some additional scooters. If we're seeing that one ride per scooter per day, that means, hey, we might just not grow for a bit or remove some scooters or test out new areas to see if there's some other demand in those other areas. So some of what the goals are, and what you're seeing, and you might have already heard of a lot of different scooters, a lot of other cities have them, what we're seeing is this focus from what we saw with the dock-based bicycles, which can be pretty orderly, but you can also have them in locations where they may not be ideal, or the final destination that you're going to does not have a station, so that that option is not as convenient as it could be. What we saw was kind of a, like Bike Share 2.0 with dockless mobility, where you saw a lot of different bicycles that didn't have to be in those docks, but could be flexible and put in different places. Well, with the introduction of a scooter, a lot more people just said, especially in cities, or in states where the climate is a lot warmer, is I'd rather take a scooter and not sweat than take a bike and show up to work a little sweaty, or it's just sometimes a lot more fun. And so this is sort of a, sort of a scooter share, like in the ride, sorry, micro-mobility 3.0. And so what it does is, when you see it, every community is sort of very different, and so we'll see individuals, especially students, gravitate to this type of service because a lot of them either don't own vehicles, or parking is too expensive, or it's just not convenient enough. So we see a lot of that. We also see individuals that are either one-vehicle home, who want to have that alternative option to get around, use these types of vehicles. And then what you'll see in other communities is the often-used in transit stops, so you'll see individuals that use them to get to that stop, then get on the bus, and then go on with their day. And oftentimes, you'll see individuals get off the bus, get on a scooter, and go on to their other destination. So there's just, it creates kind of that connection there. This is something that we looked at, at some of the bus stops. This would provide a network of different, if we deployed at some of these transit stops, so you could see that it could help connect several other neighborhoods, it could help folks that are needing to get to these destinations. It just provides an additional network, like we talked about with the first and last mile, using the current system. Now, this slide talks a little bit about what I was talking about, the 90-day, a potential 90-day demonstration project. There's a lot of different communities, especially some here in Florida, who are new to this. Coral Gables has a program with two vendors. Bird is one of them. We've been there for now two and a half months. The City of Miami is starting their program in a couple of weeks. The Fort Lauderdale has started a program with four vendors, and so what we're seeing is additional cities wanting to provide this service to their residents. And so for Temple Terrace, what we are, part of previous conversations is potentially having 100 Bird scooters deployed in different areas, and the map that you see here is subject to change based on your feedback and based on comments from city staff about ideal locations to places to make them most available for residents, and then to make changes as we see fit, see if there's areas where we're seeing a lot more use, we may want to add some more, or areas where we don't see some demand. I've worked with cities where they say, hey, I want to test out whether or not we can add some to a parking ride, see if individuals would take this if they have a shorter ride, or oftentimes we'll see at around, like corporate centers or large office buildings, individuals want to use these scooters to go to lunch somewhere. So it's very interesting how, if you sort of deploy from the start, kind of see how the community kind of embraces it and then utilizes it. A little bit about our tech. Something about the potential 90-day demonstration project is every month, we would send a report and have a dashboard actually for city staff to look at the metrics and to look at the most popular pickup locations and destinations. This will help city staff, and every city that we work with will look and use this information for their planning purposes. Oftentimes, we'll have communities say, we have some funds for a bike lane, but we want to know the best location to place one. And so nothing like actually seeing data that'll help you determine where that might be the best place for one. Additionally, we have in-app communication to help our riders and constantly remind our riders about safe riding. You'll see a helmet here that usually don't come with the helmet right next to them, but what we do is, we have a community manager here, Lakshmi, who what she does is go to events and hand out helmets, remind riders about safety, how to ride a scooter safely, and then it's also easy to order scooter helmet from our app itself. Just going through the app, send us the size that you'd like, and then we can send you one. Only thing we ask for is a dollar ninety-nine cents for shipping. Community mode is a way for anyone to report any potential issues to us so that we can respond in a timely manner. And then reminding individuals about parking, and especially if they're parking in an area that's a little sensitive, we can add zones to remind them that this is not an ideal area to park. Moving forward, we're in almost 100 cities around the world. You can see a lot of the different dots, and we have a lot of lessons learned from those operations and a lot of experience. And then additionally, like I mentioned, we have a lot of different events to remind individuals about how to use Bird safely and then hand out helmets. And I'm here to answer questions about how Bird works.
Thank you. And ahead of that, council, what staff is looking for from us this evening are for recommendations on how council would like to proceed. We have had City Manager Stevenson and Police Chief Albano have had some conversations. There are some concerns and questions that'll need to be addressed around public safety and about liability issues. And Chief, I'm aware that you and Mr. Stevenson spoke. Do you have anything to add at this point as far as questions, concerns that staff will be digging into moving forward?
Madam Mayor, at this point, subject to the direction of this council, staff has no plans to move forward whatsoever. I would share with council that at this time, this program would be illegal by Florida statute. You can't operate these motorized scooters in the road, you can't operate these motorized scooters on the sidewalks. It would require this council to enact an ordinance similar to what we did with the golf carts. Now, I supported that, but a golf cart and the safety provisions within our ordinance that are reflective upon the golf carts would not apply to that particular vehicle. I would recommend an abundance caution. This city found itself at one point out in front, if you will, with red light cameras, and we found ourselves in a class action lawsuit. There are currently, industry-wide, nothing against Bird, nothing against Bird at all, but there are currently class action lawsuits right now regarding this industry. It's an emerging, it's an emerging, it's an emerging industry, and one in which I would, I would recommend to council that we wait and see for this opportunity, see what successes and problems maybe Tampa, Coral Gables runs into before we dip our toe into this pool. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Chief. And prior to going to council for comment, I would ask, are Thank you, Chief. And prior to going to counsel for comment, I would ask, are there any members of the public that would like to address counsel on this issue? If you'd please come forward.
Again, my name is Danny Kuneck, and I just want to share some food for thought with the council. In all due respect to the presentation here, which was rather impressive, it sounds like a strategy that is product-driven rather than market-driven, and is one of them things to developing a better mousetrap for a market where there is no mice. And aside of the issues of liability and legality of those vehicles, I wonder if these good ladies and gentlemen of apparently engineering drive ever consider what people need, what they want, and how suitable those gadgets or vehicles or products are for human use? Where is the human factor side of designing something and marketing it? I'm a vivid bike rider, and I ride the bike in Temple Terrace within a radius maybe of two or three miles for convenience, practicality, and getting some cardio. I would not touch this thing in a million years, because it's dangerous. The infrastructure is not ready for that. It's illegal. But aside, the technicality of this, having a helmet, in Europe, you have real bicycles in cities where you pick them up right in vehicle-free zones, pedestrian zones, no danger, no risk, no helmets. You drop them off wherever you go to, and leave them at designated places, and walk, and then pick up another bike elsewhere, because the structure is designed for that. This is just a nice thing for under a Christmas tree that I would not use, and I would discourage anybody without a market study, who needs what, how they use it, when they use it, why they use it, and the different age groups that would care to have it and buy it and pay for it by the hour, by the day, or by the month, for something where Americans, and I'm a natural citizen, okay, but Americans are hooked on cars. And it's dangerous out there riding bicycles, especially electrical vehicles. This is a thing driven by Silicon Valley to putting microchips into and onto anything, including your toilet paper, and it's coming.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? Seeing counsel questions, comments? Councilman Ross?
Well, not a question, more comments. I've been retired from law enforcement for a couple of years, so I'm a little bit stale, but I'm pretty familiar with the Florida traffic statutes. And there's a difference, as the chief alluded to. First of all, the bike share programs are different, because a human-powered vehicle, such as a bicycle, can be operated on the roadway, and it can be operated on a sidewalk. These are classified by 316 as motorized scooters. They cannot be operated on the roadway. They cannot be operated on the sidewalk, which doesn't leave a lot of other places to operate them. In regards to the golf cart, Florida statute 316 enables municipalities to adopt regulations in certain areas to permit the operation of golf carts on certain designated roadways, which we have done. It also goes on to permit the authorization to operate ATVs and UTVs on certain unpaved roadways designated by municipalities. But it does not authorize municipalities to authorize the operation of motorized scooters on a roadway. In fact, 316 goes so far as to preempt municipalities from doing so. So in order to do this, the whole debate shouldn't even get to the point of whether this is a good idea, whether it's danger. It's illegal. I mean, that's where the discussion should stop. So I think we have the cart before the horse. It is an emergency, emerging technology. There's lots of them. We saw Uber and Lyft and rideshare companies. When they first emerged, they were in conflict with regulations also. If we think this is the future, and we like this idea for our city, we need to begin with our lobbyists in the Florida League of Cities to lobby Tallahassee in the state legislature to change Chapter 316 to allow us to designate certain roadways, like we can with golf carts and ATVs. But I am not in favor, whether we're talking about scooters, or plastic bags, or whatever we're talking about. I am completely in favor of home rule, but I am not in favor of ignoring state law and just doing what we think might be a good idea. This is a nation of laws. There's mechanisms in place to change those laws if they become outdated. And maybe they have. Maybe this is the thing of the future. But the first step, in my mind, is to get Tallahassee to amend the statutes to give us this authority, not just to ignore the law.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. Councilman Donahue.
Yep. I'd like to ask a couple of questions, if I might, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
So I attended the Florida League of Cities Transportation Advisory Council, and they had a presentation by Coral Gables. And she said that they had gone through some of these same questions that we did. So could you just tell me how they managed to go around this, or what they had to do? It's definitely, I mean, to hear from our police chief, his concerns is going to weigh heavy on this council.
Absolutely. Yeah, so the councilman is correct that there is a section in Chapter 316, and the specific code is 316.0087A. And it reads, "A county municipality may enact an ordinance to permit, control, or regulate the operation of vehicles, golf carts, mopeds, motorized scooters, and electric personal-assisted mobility vehicles on sidewalks or sidewalk areas when such use is permitted under federal law. The ordinance must restrict such vehicles or devices to a maximum speed of 15 miles per hour in such areas." So that's the portion of the statute that Coral Gables has authorized us to operate on the sidewalks. And our vehicles are capped at 15 miles per hour, so we fit under that provision.
Okay. And so it would be on us to change, to petition, to ask the rule to change, or it says that we can do this?
A municipality may enact an ordinance.
Okay. All right. So I think, when I met with Mr. Hernandez and City Manager, he had some of those same questions, and we both did. And I think that's probably something that everybody says right away is, well, you know, just because it's new, doesn't, you know. It's my understanding that what we're asking for tonight is a 90-day study, and for us, so that we don't just say, oh, this is too new for us, you know, I'm not getting on it. And I understand, there are a lot of people out there, mostly sitting in this room, who are saying, I'm not getting on it. But there are an awful lot of young people out there who are saying that they would, they would take this to, you know, to USF if it could go that far, to, you know, to the rec center, to different places. So it's my understanding that what we're asking tonight for counsel to do is just to allow the study to go forward, so that we don't just send Bird, I would say, on their way, scooting, or whatever. But, you know, so that, I would really like to see us at least look at it. And I also have, I know Mr. Sharp is in the audience, and if you would allow me, Mayor, I'd like, and Mr. Hernandez, please, to give us that connection of, you know, how would we connect to them?
At this point, it's council discussion. So just one moment, please. This is council comment and council discussion at this point. Councilman Schisler, and then we'll go to Chief.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a lot of the same concerns, obviously, that the chief has stated, and that Mr. Ross has stated, that that should take a significant impact, or make a significant impact on how we direct staff to move forward. There's other concerns I have, is, you know, liability to the city if something happens. You know, and from a practical matter, these things are expensive. They're not cheap. Where are they going to be ridden? I looked at the map. I looked at the places where they were going to be the nests and so forth. It's just, I don't see it. I don't see the viability of it at this point. You know, maybe some future time, when the redevelopment is completed, and a nest could be instituted in that region, when we get that layout and that vision solidified, maybe I could see something then. But we're nowhere near, we're years away from that. I can see where this would work in a downtown setting, where you're going from a big, tall apartment or condo to your place of business, and you got to go six, eight, 10 blocks, and you park it there and come back and get another one. But I don't see it sitting out on the front of 56th and Beverly and being there tomorrow. It's not going to be there tomorrow afternoon, or tonight, or tomorrow morning. So that's my concern. And overall, it's, it might be a nice idea, and it's someday down the road, but I just don't see spending a lot of time on it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schisler. Chief?
So I'd just like to speak to the comment that was made about going forward with the 90-day test. In order to do that, and not be in opposition to state law, you would have to first create your ordinance to allow for that. And that would only be on sidewalks. As Councilmember Ross stated, you can't ride them, period. And even the city can't decide to enact an ordinance, because it would supersede statute. You're not allowed to do that in the roadway. So we can't even do the 90 days unless we create the ordinance. And I'm confused, because their very presentation says on the Events and Awareness page, don't ride on sidewalks. So if we're not supposed to ride on sidewalks in accordance with the presentation that has been made, and statute only if you guys are willing to take it upon yourselves to create this ordinance, to allow for it to be ridden on the sidewalks, I just don't understand where we're trying to go with this.
Ms. Shoshon?
I had spoken with Coral Gables' city attorney a couple of months ago now, and they were kind enough to provide me with all of their materials. So I have a copy of their ordinance that I can share with you all, if you're interested, in taking a look at what they've done. But in addition to that, they entered into, and I was looking at a contract they had, not with Bird, but I guess a competing company. They had a non-exclusive contract with them that was quite lengthy, required the company to obtain liability insurance. Also, the company had to agree to be willing to submit to polygraph examinations, drug screenings periodically. They had to comply with the city's drug-free workplace policy. But most important, too, is that it outlined where these scooters can be left, because the problem that had existed prior to the, I don't know how it's worked out since the agreement, but the problem that existed prior to the agreement was that they were finding them left everywhere. So it designated what portions of sidewalks they could be left at, not left at, allowed them to be left in medians. That was Coral Gables' choice, but there was a long list of places. So if this is considered an ordinance allowing the use of the sidewalk in that way, it should also be part and parcel with a very extensive contract as well.
Thank you, Councilman Donahue.
Well, I think that's what, I think that's what I would like to see us do, is not have scooters for the next 90 days driving around, testing it like that, but have Mr. Stevenson continue to work with this company to see if, in fact, it's palatable to us. Because right now, it isn't, because we don't know enough about it. But as you can see from Ms. Shoshon, she's, she has been given some tools that were used by another city. And it's very possible that, you know, we tell everybody that we're a multimodal city, except that right now, we use cars and golf carts. And I get, believe me, I am not thoroughly convinced that I'm ever going to get on one of these, okay? But the point is, there are ways for us now to begin, and we're trying to start connecting to USF and to bring people to us. And this is the future. This is, I was just in DC, and they were everywhere. And they weren't, they weren't in anyone's way. And this was on crowded streets. So we're not DC, we're not even Tampa. But what I would like for us to do is to just say, don't say to them, goodbye, thank you for coming, and don't come back. Let's just have City Manager continue his conversation with them, and bring it back to us, and say, this is what he's learned. In the conversations I had with Mr. Stevenson, and, you know, maybe he's changed his mind, he's not here tonight, to say differently, but he was encouraging them to come back and to make this presentation. So that's what I'm asking, is that the 90-day study be just that, a study to see how and if this would work. And I'd like to make a motion to that effect, that we take the next 90 days to look at this program, to see if it's worth consideration. I'm not asking that we put scooters out there, but maybe in the 90 days, Mr. Stevenson says, and Bird says, well, look, you know, we'd like to test one between...
Ms. Donahue, if you're making a motion, could you play the motion a bit more succinct?
You don't want it to be that long? Okay, my motion is that we initiate, that we say to Mr. Stevenson that we would like for him to continue talking to this company, and that we give him a 90-day cap. And within that range, I'll say no more.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second. Discussion?
Did you, does your motion prohibit them from putting scooters out there? Is that, because I don't think it's going to take 90 days to talk. I mean, I don't, I'm not opposed, talking is not going to hurt anybody. I'm not opposed to hurt, I'm not, we can talk and keep a conversation going.
I think that's what I'm asking.
Okay. But I'm clearly opposed to the motion, if it's going to include any test of putting these on the street in conflict with the law.
One of the problems with this type of study is that there are two levels. This one would be for us, all right? Look into what is required of us, find out from Bird, what are they liable for? Because we've all asked questions here tonight that have not been addressed, okay? So that's the first piece. And then I'm guessing that if we get satisfied with that portion of it, and figure out how we could work at it, then we would initiate an additional study after that, that says, on a limited basis, this is how we want to see it. Maybe we start with Telecom Park, and just say, it's limited to that area. You know, I'm not going to add any more to that, because I don't want to prohibit conversation. But my motion is that we continue talking with this company, that we direct Mr. Stevenson, and that allow him to continue this conversation.
I'm just looking, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I'm just looking for clarification that the motion is only including talk, not putting test scooters out.
Correct. No, you're right.
All right. Thank you.
Are there other comments from counsel? Councilman Shiller?
Madam Mayor, I will not support the motion. I feel that it is certainly something of the future. My kids would probably be the biggest users, but again, kids don't think. I think that there are a lot of safeguards that need to be addressed. I know when we went forward, and I was one of the supporters of red light cameras. We were the guinea pig that went out there. We were the first ones to be sued, although the company promised us, and it happened as soon as I got off the council last time, that if we were to get sued, that they would release us from any liability. Well, obviously, that didn't happen. When I came back on board, we engaged in discussions again, and then even the police chief saw the merit of that company. So I'm not saying it's a bad company. I'm not saying that I want these people to go away and shut the door. I'm just saying that I want to sit back and monitor its development, and see how it does with other jurisdictions. And if it takes off in the right direction, it's successful, then certainly, we would engage it. I can see a direct link, maybe to USF with others in our circle. But I do not want to be on the front line, as we were with the red light cameras, and there could be consequences. You know, I think another step before that would be maybe looking at the Rent a Bike program. That's never come here. Maybe you ease into it with something like that, see how it goes. But to see scooters running through our city right now, it's dangerous enough, and that would just add to the commotion, until some more calm or parameters are put in place to help guide this type of development. I feel it's a thing of the future, but I don't quite feel we're there yet. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Shiller. Councilman Schisler?
Yes, I likewise would not be able to support this perpetuation of a study, or the implementation of a study at this point in time. It's not one of our burning issues, having just come off the campaign trail, or for lack of a better word, there's an awful lot of bigger fish that we need to fry, that we don't need to... lot of bigger fish that we need to fry, that we don't need to keep the city manager going after every little thing. We have projects we need to get done. We have initiatives that I know I want to bring forward, excuse me, that were from our public, our citizenry. So, given that, maybe in another five years, it might be a worthwhile project for our location, given the differences between the city of Tampa, Washington DC, and just the layout of the city of Temple Terrace. I don't say it, but I don't think that we need to devote the city resources and the precious time that the administration has to get everything done that we're expecting them to do. It's just a little bit too much of a delusion of effort.
Thank you, Councilman Schisler. And your mayor would just add, as we talk about potential connectivity with USF, there is no ordinance we can pass that is going to allow these on Fowler Avenue once it gets outside of our jurisdiction. And I can't admit, there are not sidewalks straight through to USF, and their own presentation materials say, "Don't be on a sidewalk." You certainly don't want them on Fowler Avenue. It just doesn't seem to be. I can absolutely see the application on a university campus. I think it would be phenomenal for students to get from point A to point B and around that huge campus that is USF. But within our city, I agree with our council members who have expressed those concerns. So, we have a motion, we have a second, we have had discussion. If there's no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign?
Nay.
Motion fails. Thank you. Moving forward, item 5B, Mayor's Board and Committee Appointments. The mayor is responsible for annually appointing city council members as representatives of the city to various Hillsborough County boards. The following appointments will be made, and if there's any, oh, and if there's any desire for further of the discussion, the mayor would be happy to answer. The following appointments are made. Metropolitan Planning Organization, Tampa Hillsborough Economic Development, the Council of Governments in Florida League of Cities will be Mayor Harado. Metropolitan Planning Organization Alternate, Tourist Development Council, and Council of Governments will be Councilman Schiller. Board of Adjustment and Library Board will be Councilman Chambers. Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, Suncoast League of Cities, Affordable Housing Task Force will be Councilman Donahue. Hillsborough River Interlocal Planning Board, Municipal Code Enforcement Board, River Watch Task Force will be Councilman Ross. Hillsborough County Regional Transit, School Improvement Support Committee, and Temple Terrace Audit Committee will be Councilman Schisler. I would ask for a motion to approve the appointments.
May I make a comment?
We need a motion before we comment.
Move to approve the assignments.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, Councilman Donahue.
Well, I'm sorry that we move to approve this as it is because I am seriously concerned about why I was removed from the Hart Board. I have leadership positions on that board. I'm sitting on the search committee for the new CEO. I have established rapport with the citizens of Temple Terrace to work on their behalf. I have, like I say, I belong to a very, quite a few different committees that I have been appointed to and elected to by that board. And when I was appointed initially, it was for a three-year term, and so they were counting on that for me to be able to finish that. And this will remove a person who has not only been spending time with them, I've learned a lot with them, I've quite a bit invested in that board, and I'm surprised to see that I've been removed without any comment or discussion or any question at all. So...
Thank you. If I could answer that, Councilman Donahue. One, there are not three-year appointments for either the city of Tampa or the city of Temple Terrace. When our clerk brought that to my attention, I called Hart, and they said, "All serve at the pleasure of the mayor, and there are no designated timeframes for elected officials." The rationale behind it is this is an organization that, for the past several years, has experienced ongoing financial and operational challenges. Last year, the search for a new CEO was suspended due to the need to get the financial house in order. Just this past June, the CFO stepped down because of organizational challenges and allegations. We're blessed to have in our city a brand-new council member who comes with great financial acumen and forensic financial acumen to actually ask the questions about this issue. At a recent candidate forum, when asked about how to invest a million dollars, Councilmember Donahue, you said it was above your pay grade, and you left numbers and dollars to the professionals. One of the challenges with the Hart Board is a lot of decisions have been left to the professionals, and it has not served our citizens well. We had a bus route that was canceled. You never briefed this board on that issue. I was briefed on it at an MPO when citizens approached me and said, "Can you please help because we can't get answers from Hart?" It was brought to this body when Councilman Schiller read about it in a Sunday newspaper and quite adamantly and passionately said, "We've got to get it back." It was our city manager who was left to get it back. I believe it's been nine months from going back in meeting minutes that Councilman Ross has been bringing up moving of a bus stop. Two meetings ago, you said, "It's just not that easy." Again, our city manager stepped forward and got it done. These are the reasons that, as we look at very strong financial challenges of an organization that has a lot of questions around it, we need the person on this dais representing our citizens who has the strongest financial acumen. It was about assessing skills, and it was about assessing where we could move forward. As we've seen on the county commission, major movements, I went to an MPO meeting today, and lots of people were involved on lots of committees, and movements happened. I think, just as Commissioner Miller has done, as you look at new players joining the team, you assess where are the strengths. And for each of the appointments, I went appointment by appointment, saying, "Where are the strengths? Where can we garner the greatest impact for our citizens?" We absolutely need transparency. We need someone who is going to come and raise their hand in a flag if there are challenges with an organization. We have been left to read about in the newspaper the challenges of Hart, and I would hope, as a board member, you would concur, there are some serious challenges in that organization, and there have been. So, that is the rationale, council members, for the appointment. If you need further rationale...
Please allow me to explain a few things. First of all, when Mission Max came in, I was the first one to actually hold meetings on the bus. So, yes, I cannot speak the audit speak that you can. However, it is a mobility organization, and it's more about pennies and dollars and cents. It's about people and moving people from place to place. And so, I worked with that board to get that route back. It was not easy to do because it was a financial situation that they were in at the time, and the ridership was not there. But because of my actions, they were able to offer us an alternative. And many of you saw the Teslas driving around Temple Terrace. That was brought here because of me. Now, because I did not bring it here and take time to this board to tell what I was doing, now I know that that's what you want me to do. I will make sure that I do that. On the issue of the bus stop, it was not something that could be done by them saying, "Yes, we're just going to move this bus stop." He was also working, CEO, was working with the county, who at the time, as you see, were putting in new sidewalks, okay? So, there was quite a bit going on. No one told us about these sidewalks. I didn't hear from city manager that there was construction that was going to happen. The point is, there are several things that you do in that organization, that you're sitting there wearing two hats. You're wearing the Hart Board hat, which means that when they present to you the financial constraints that they have, and you're saying, "Well, but my city needs this bus," and they're saying, "Well, we can look at it." And I protested at each and every meeting, but I am one of 15, and therefore, I was not successful. Did I stop there? No, I did not. I continued to work with the organization, pointing out how important it was for our citizens. I continued meeting with our citizens. We met with the CEO, we met with the CFO, and those issues that you pointed out, they, I'm going to tell you that they are working, they are stronger now than they were with the former CEO. Yes, we're looking for a new CEO because the board has decided that they want to reach out and see what is out there. But it is a strong organization, and I'll be happy for you, Mr. Schisler, to get on that board, but I am truly disappointed that I have been removed for things that you perceive that I have failed to do. And I am sorry that you feel that way, because apparently, our citizens didn't feel that way, because they are the ones you tell me that they appreciate what I've done on this board. I have no question, serving on the other boards, I will tell you that you have quite a few seats to fill, and I guess, and you're right, there has been a change in the BOCC, but the reason for that, because people were on the Hart Board who didn't support the work of the mobility issue that is facing the Hart, okay? So, and that was done, that's a completely separate issue from us. I am sorry that I have been removed from this. I am personally offended for being removed from this particular board, and I hope that you will vote against this, just so that perhaps the mayor will reconsider and put me back on that board. I have at least one more year to finish the work that I've started, and I was looking forward to doing it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you. The appointments are made. Next, Vice Mayor selection. The vice mayor position is filled on a rotation basis. Councilmembers who have served a minimum of two years are eligible. Pursuant to Rule 6 of the Council Rules and Order of Procedure, councilmembers elect a vice mayor for a one-year term. The chair will now take nominations for the next vice mayor.
Nominate Councilmember Schiller.
Councilman Schiller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please signify with aye.
Has Mr. Schiller indicated that he would do it?
I guess.
Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Schiller.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Donahue.
Is there a second? We have a motion for Mr. Schiller with the first and a second. All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Vice Mayor Schiller. Next item is the resolution approving the purchase of a replacement fire inspector vehicle. Councilman Ross, I will turn it over to you.
I did have a question, Chief, about what vehicle is this Ford Escape replacing? What kind of vehicle is it replacing?
It's a, I believe it's 11-year-old, 12-year-old Explorer, Ford Explorer, that one of the fire inspectors is currently using.
Well, that's the basis of my question. I realize that this is not a first responder vehicle, it's the inspector's vehicle, but having done something similar for 30-some-odd years, I know what it's like. This is more than just transportation, this is your office. You're in and out of this car all day long. And my concern is, while I appreciate the fact that we're coming in on your budget, are we really, and you tell me, is a Ford Escape going to be satisfactory to do this job, or should we spend a couple thousand dollars more and get the guy an Explorer, a Yukon, or something that you can put more gear in? Because I can't, I mean, I'm not the biggest guy around, I'm 6'1", but I can't imagine getting in and out of a Ford Escape all day, every day. That just seems like it's going to, I mean, are we saving $2,000 to give an employee a car they're going to hate for the next 10 years?
That's a good question. What we tried to do is budget for a vehicle, we wanted to, we looked at Explorers, and our budget was $30,000, and the Explorer ended up, over the last few years, since we bought one, we haven't bought one in about five or six years, has gone up a little bit more than we thought it was. So, it would be probably closer to 30, lower threes to probably $30,000, $35,000 for an Explorer. I asked with all, with everything on it, you know, with some striping with the radios and also on the lighting package. So, I asked the Assistant Fire Marshal, who heads over the inspectors, to look at some vehicles that were maybe a little bit cheaper, but that his inspectors would be able to use. So, we came back with, I think it was a Chevy, whatever's comparable to the Escape, and then we came back with a Ford Escape. We talked to the city garage. The city garage and Eddie's preference at this time is to try to stay in the Ford, in the Ford marriage of vehicles, so hence the reason why we went with Ford. You know, I'm sure that if you tell me, and the council would like to move a little bit into an Explorer, I'm sure they wouldn't be upset about that.
Well, you tell me, but now, there's a difference between 22,000 and 35. That's a little more. But the last Tahoe's I bought, before I retired, they weren't that much. They were, I think we paid 26 for the vehicle or something like that, only a little bit more. So, now, that's a couple years ago. But if you're happy with it, I'm happy. I just, you know, we don't normally look at this kind of thing, but having lived a similar life, I know a Ford Escape is, you know, you can put that in your pocket and walk across the street.
I'm not quite as familiar with them as you are, but I can tell you what, we do have somebody that is an inspector that's, he's probably, you know, our assistant fire marshal, I think he's 6'7", and our inspector, one of the inspectors is 6'3" or 6'4", so...
That's why I'm asking.
You may be correct in that. We planned on replacing this one for the inspector who happens to be about my size. So, I think, hopefully, I think if we purchase this one, if we realize that, hey, moving forward because of the size of our other inspectors and/or didn't meet our expectation, we also have a housing officer, that Lynn Valente, that has a vehicle as well, who's, again, probably a little shorter than myself and doesn't have a lot of the fire inspection equipment that the fire inspectors and fire investigators have. So, he may be, and I know his vehicle is coming up as well.
Well, you tell, I mean, if this is the car you want, I'll make a motion that we buy it for you. I'm just, do you want to do that, or do you want to table this for two weeks and think about it?
No, well, I think I'm good with this purchase.
Okay.
Yes, sir. But thank you for, I really appreciate your suggestions and your interest in this.
Therefore, Madam Mayor, I move that we purchase the vehicle as proposed.
We have a motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of a replacement fire inspector vehicle. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Next, is there any additional new business to come before council?
Madam Mayor, in the past, city council has given, has designated Christmas Eve Day, December 24th, as a holiday for city employees, and I would like to make that motion again. I've spoken to the city manager about it, and he agrees.
Thank you, Councilman Chambers. Thank you, Councilman Schisler. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Chambers, and I see Councilman Schisler and then Councilman Ross.
Is this the proper time to give kudos to some people and staff, or is this, or another one? Another hat that I wear is with Terrace Community Middle School, and we, in November, we had our Trot Through the Terrace, the seventh annual, and I just wanted to give a shout out to the rec. department, Leisure Services, to Carl and Corey, and Public Works with the cones, and it was just a phenomenal effort. We appreciate everything that you did with us and helped make it a huge success. We're runners and never before, and we're going to try and grow it again next year. But just, thank you, y'all did a great job, and the police officers that were on staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Being absent at the last meeting, I just wanted to congratulate our new council members and our returning council member. And I did watch the outgoing, and I want to thank Mr. Pogorilich and Mr. Boss for their service to the city, and I look forward to working with you and continuing to work with you, and thank you for your passion and all you do for the city.
And prior to turning it over to Chief for the city manager's report, I want to thank Carl and our police, everyone who worked on putting Winter Wonderland together. There was a host of activities. It was just a great family, a great community event, and people came and stayed. Someone asked me what time we finally left. We left, I think we got home about 10 minutes to 9:00, but it was still going. We left, I think we got home about 10 minutes to 9:00, but it was still going full bore, but thank, thank you all who, who made that possible to happen. And with this, we'll turn it over, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Shalura.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to address one quick issue. We, the gentleman that spoke earlier was exactly right. It's very unfortunate that our media chooses not to talk about great things happening in our community. Redevelopment, I thank everybody that's up on this dais and has knocked on doors, the top discussion's been redevelopment, and you've not seen one thing in a newspaper about the city closing on that corner. That's shameful. We worry about negative things, but that's what we should be really drawing attention to. There should be a big banner on that, on that lot saying, "We finally closed, you know, let's break ground." We have to inject energy into this city. Most people have just said, "It's never going to happen." And I've been here quite some time, and there's been a lot of talk about it. This is the first time we've finally taken a big step. You know, we've made efforts in the past, unfortunately, they weren't successful. So, I know Ms. Pogorilich, Mr. Boss, they were the members originally when, during the last episodes, and, and they certainly did a lot of work to try to protect the city and the vision of, of the people. So, I think we really need to, to look at that very carefully, because there's not anything out there aside from it being addressed here a few weeks ago, and it just got slept under, under the carpet, and we moved on. We drew, we drew more attention when the gentleman from Paragon came here and started running in a little circle. There was more fireworks with that than there was when they closed the deal. I mean, that's where you should have a party. But I also want to, and if I need to make this into a motion, I will, Mr. Stevenson had mentioned, when he mentioned that the property closed, it has always been the intention of the city council, previous council members, and hopefully the new council members, that any proceeds from the sale of property go to the paying down of that debt. And I want to make sure it stays on that track, so my motion is that we authorize our city manager and our finance director to use those proceeds to pay down the debt of the interest-only loan, which is the short-term loan, which is intended to be paid off once those parcels are sold. And every week, every month we wait, those are thousands and thousands of dollars that we can be spending to buy the upgraded fire car, or whatever else we want to buy. So, the motion is that we direct our staff, give them the green light, to use the proceeds from the sale of the property, all the proceeds from the sale of the property, to pay down the debt that the city has in place with the redevelopment property.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion on that? It was an echo, it was an echo second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you, motion carries, and thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Shalura. Chief, acting city manager, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I need to go back to, to the, to the motion that was made by Councilmember Chambers, and thank you very much on behalf of all the city employees. We greatly appreciate that, and, and all of council for, for supporting that. One thing I have to ask for clarification, however, in the past, I need to, need to know if we have a consensus, if this is your intent in the past for the essential employee, I hate saying that, but for the ones that can't be off that day, we have in the past added a administrative leave with pay, not a holiday, because some of the agreements create all kinds of friction if it's a holiday, and administrative leave day with pay be for those employees, police and fire and public works that have to work on Christmas Eve. If I could have a consensus from council, if that was to be inclusive of them.
My motion was to do exactly what we've done in the past.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted clarification. I was asked if this came up to make sure that I clarified that.
Very good. And I'll just clarify with our clerk, do you need an amended motion, Ms. Moon? Okay, you've got it. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Very good. Well, in addition to that, all I have to, to add is some upcoming events, Madam Mayor and City Council. Thursday, December 6, Mothers Against Drunk Drivers will once again be holding their candlelight vigil in Temple Terrace at 7:00 at Mission Hill Church. December 10 is the Woodmont Clubhouse Holiday Luncheon, and the punchbowl begins at 11:30 sharp. December 13 is the city employee luncheon at Lightfoot Center between 12:30 and 2:00. And lastly, December 21, at 10:00 here in the council chambers, we have the swearing-in ceremony for our three newest officers. So, you're all invited to attend that. We greatly appreciate it when you do, and that would be my report, Madam Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any additional business, Councilman, Councilman Schisler?
Question, Chief. With the addition of the three officers, where are we, where do we stand on patrol staffing?
I believe we're still down five. I believe five, five is the number. I have, I have, we have three in the academy, one graduating soon, two of them are sponsored that will be, that will be coming out, I believe, just after the New Year, maybe beginning of February, by the time we can start to process them. And if we can, if we can retain who we have, it's looking good that I, my, my goal has been, and with your support certainly, it's, it's made it a lot easier to, to get us back up to staff by mid-year.
Thank you, Chief, and I would just remind everyone who's in attendance this night, this evening or viewing, please keep city manager Stevenson and his family in your prayers as, as he is caring for his, his mother at this time, and if there is no further business to come before this body, we will stand adjourned.